I have six o'clock. We'd like to welcome everybody to this June 15th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman at this time if you would join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us tonight as we do the business of the city and do those things that ultimately will be in the best interest of our citizens. In your name we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ma'am, clear what you call the role.
Alderman Dingell, here. Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best. Alderman Odom.
Here.
At this time, we'd like to read to you the notice that was given, and it was properly noticed that on June 11th, 2020, we, the City of New Bern, sent out a letter, please call, a special meeting of the Board of Alderman and of the City of New Bern for Monday, June 15th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the City Hall courtroom located on the second floor of 300 Pollock Street. The purpose of this meeting is as follows: Discussion regarding the Stanley White Recreation Center and opportunity for public comment will not be available at this meeting, and the second thing to do is to adjourn the meeting. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to our acting city manager, who is also the director of our public work, of our parks and recreation. Mr. Foster Hughes, would you go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor Alderman. We're going to start off showing you a few pictures of the Stanley White Recreation Center. And Colleen, if I can get you to get our PowerPoint ready. Okay, so you have a packet in front of you, and it's up on the screen as well. This is a photo of Stanley White Recreation Center the day after Hurricane Florence came through, so it gives you an idea of the type of water that was in the facility. Our next picture shows the water around Henderson Park, around the ball field, basketball courts, and playground shelter area. The next item you're going to see is a map of the current flood zone of New Bern and the Duffy Field area. So you'll see an area in yellow. I'm sorry, we can't point with this pointer, but the Stanley White Recreation Center is located in the 100-year flood zone. The next map actually shows with the block and a black dot where the Stanley White Recreation Center is in that flood zone itself. Now, you'll see a recent picture taken of the Stanley White Recreation Center. To the side of the building, you're going to see yellow two-by-four blocks. That is the new elevation of what the new recreation center would be if we put the recreation center back into current location at Henderson Park. So that just gives you a little perspective on what that looks like.
So that's where the floor level would be?
That is where the floor level would be on the top block. That's 11 feet above sea level. And so at this time, I'm going to ask Trip Yor with MBF Architects to come up, and he's got a presentation to cover some things. And of course, if you have any questions during the evening, please don't hesitate to ask.
Mr. Mayor Alderman, good evening. My purpose here tonight is to recap the cost estimates that were put together to secure the grant funding. If you add the replacement cost and the demolition cost and the reporting you've previously received, that's the exact amount of the grant you receive. In regard to that, those cost estimates projected or forecast the cost of a replacement building at about $285 a square foot plus soft cost. Okay, with that said, those estimates included things like elevating the building to a designed flood elevation. That was roughly about five feet of additional fill, as indicated by the yellow blocks or two-by-fours in the photo you just saw. It also included reworking of the parking, various retaining walls, steps, and handicap rims. Anticipating what you might be dealing with tonight, we've tried to isolate the cost of those improvements necessary to elevate the building on the Henderson Park site. And essentially, those figures come out to be about $420,617. And that's $23 a square foot incorporated into the $285 a square foot total. Or maybe another way of looking at it is that for $420,617, if we didn't have to elevate the building, that would build about another 1,500 square feet of building.
All right, back up just one second, because I want to make sure sometimes I need a little bit segmented. I want to make sure that I understand what you're saying. So you're saying it's going to be $420,000 to elevate the building?
Roughly.
That was your estimate?
Those are the estimates that were prepared for FEMA.
Does that include the fill and everything like that?
That was primarily the fill, retaining walls, steps, and some rims.
You don't have that per foot cost, do you? I know we could get it real quick.
It's 23, I thought he just said.
How much is it?
Chief, it's $285 a square foot total before you start calculating.
Plus?
For the project, within that $285 a square foot, those improvements account for $23.
So is it 285 plus 23?
Nope.
Okay, 285.
23 is in there. And so essentially, Stanley White Recreation Center is currently 18,057 square feet, according to our measurements. And so if I divide the $420,617 by $285 a square foot, I get 1,475 square feet.
That, I don't have it in front of me, but I know that the FEMA requires, is there a 20-foot buffer around the building before you do your sloping? You've got that all figured in there?
We've got that figured in, although the specific question that you asked, I don't know what the FEMA, specific FEMA requirement is, but that's good design.
Corey, what is it?
That's good design.
Around the perimeter, you have to also have sight feel of a certain 20-foot buffer or something, do you know?
The grant is approved at the present time for elevating the existing footprint of the building.
Okay, and did you also take into consideration the engineer's report that also said in there? Mr. Odom, what did it say? I don't have it in front of me. It called for?
It says, "Due to the soft clays encountered at depths of 4.5 to 6 feet, isolated undercutting to depths of approximately 6 feet in the vicinity of the sounding should be anticipated." So I don't know if an engineer can clarify that. I took that as you're going to have to cut out 6 feet of dirt, bring in new dirt because the clay's soft. In addition to that, you're going to have to go up another 5 to 6 feet to get to the base flood elevation, correct? And to answer that specifically, I'll have to follow up with ECS who prepared that report. I think the undercutting is likely relative for the shallow foundation that is a possibility. However, when we worked through FEMA, we recommended using a pile foundation because we had differential settlement problems. And obviously, if we were to rebuild, our recommendation is to use that piled foundation, which we did price. And it shouldn't require that much undercut.
I know that the Executive Order 11988 refers to support columns and a elevated, not a monolithic, on a prepared slab or pad. So is that in your figures, an elevated support column-type construction?
Essentially, we get that with piled foundation, but we had also brought up the fill underneath the support, the slab. So I think it's a combination of the standard you reference is what we have pressed.
And would you, on the two sites, alternative, the alternative site and this site, for future expansion additions, I think the soil boundary kind of changes right there at the back of the building, so the integrity is a little bit compromised with that other soil condition. So have you considered for future expansion of the Stanley White if we get infield construction, new homes, et cetera? Have you, have you looked at the possibility of the type of weight of a building on the present site versus the alternative site? Is there a differential in what type of building could be built for the community?
So we have not done any analysis on an alternative site. All our work was done on the Henderson Park site. But the piled foundation and the concrete piled caps is a very sturdy foundation that supports significantly much more weight than a conventional shallow foundation. And so we've also priced that because, again, we're bridging potentially unsuitable soils to some degree, and we want to make sure that the differential settlement doesn't compromise the building's effect.
So would it be a fair statement that your figure, maybe we should double it? If we are going to properly, the integrity of the foundation's not going to be in question, that we would extract or demug that particular area to get those unsuitable soils out and suitable soils back? Would we double that figure, or we add 2/3 to it, or what?
Well, I think we've correctly anticipated it within the scope of our estimate. Again, I think what ECS reported with 6 feet of undercut is more relative to a shallow foundation system. 2 feet of back, or undercut and backfill is usually a generous amount to support a typical building, one as Stanley White is currently constructed.
Trip, I have another question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's noted in your packet that you had provided about the stormwater ponds. So at the time the building was built, there were no stormwater ponds, and the runoff and a lot of that, it was too close to the building, not correct piping. So you're saying that you're going to have to, you know, in putting the replacement building, do some of that work and create ponds. So therefore, that's going to take away from some of the amenities of Henderson Park. Is that correct, as well as the parking lot and that area to elevate it because of the terracing you're probably going to have to do because of the elevation? That will take away some amenities of Henderson Park, is that correct?
It will impact some of them. Within our estimate, we've actually relocated what was impacted. So for instance, the ball field to the north of the center essentially moves northward about 20 feet and gets reestablished within our estimates, as well as the parking lot. There's a stormwater pond adjacent that parking lot. I believe there's some tennis courts or a paved basketball court of some nature that we also relocated beside the stormwater pond within our estimates.
Could we possibly mitigate, and I know this is a little bit out of your scope, and our engineer could probably answer this better, but maybe you can.
I'll take a shot.
The alternative site has some impervious areas, and because those areas presently are impervious, and if the future was that those improvements were demolished and were became pervious, is there a possibility to reduce the amount of stormwater lagoon secondary and primary ponds? Could we mitigate that situation and reduce the amount based on the fact that we have quasi credits for those impervious surfaces? Is that a possibility?
It is, and essentially, what's involved is what I call a historical research of the development of the site that quantified the impervious area that previously existed, and then that's accounted for in the new calculations where stormwater facilities don't need to provide for those aspects, only the development this beyond the impervious area that was once there. And that'd be a smart thing to do.
And did you have construction costs on a conventional site, generally speaking, that is of suitable soil conditions? Did you have, did you run numbers for a replicated building elsewhere?
We have not, but we're certainly capable of doing that if you so choose.
So what, what type of differential would there be between the problems we have with this site versus an alternative site?
I think it's roughly $23 a square foot or so. In other words, a half million dollars.
You're going with $23, I got you.
You know, accounts for the answer you're looking.
Okay. Does the board have any more questions at this time, or can? We might have some more questions for you later. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I've got a few questions, Mr. Mayor, that either for Foster or Corey or Trip, that whoever might be able to answer them. I think the first one is basically for Foster. Have you reached out to anyone in North Carolina in the past few weeks to find out what the going rate is per square foot to build a new recreation center?
There are two recreation center projects. One has just been completed, the other one is in process now. One is in Pinehurst, the other's in Garner. And that square footage price on those is approximately 240 a square foot range for the building itself.
Do you know if they had to elevate those?
They did not have to elevate those.
And the price of ours with the elevation is in that same range?
Projected at 285.
285, okay, thank you. This question is, are we now obligated? Corey, that might be your question for you. Are we obligated now? Do we have funds?
The money, the money has been obligated and transferred to the state.
Thank you. What are the conditions that we must comply with to rebuild the Stanley White Center at the current locations? To rebuild the center at the current location?
That could take a long time to answer, but I have spent the weekend doing a lot of reading and trying to condense this down to as simple as I, as I can do it.
Just maybe the top four or five ones or something, anyway?
You're going to have to maintain $8 million worth of flood insurance, or whatever it costs you to rebuild the facility there in a special flood hazard area. So that would be 500,000 of NFIP insurance, most likely, and then you'd have to secure 7.5 million of excess insurance in the commercial market for the facility. And that's because there is a obtain and maintain requirement conditional on the FEMA assistance for the amount of the grant, which is 8 million. It would be actually 8 million less the demolition cost, but that's, that's a rough figure.
Do we have any idea what 8 million dollars worth of flood insurance would cost the City of New Bern?
We do not have an idea on the full 8 million. We do have a price on the 500,000 for, to go onto the existing Henderson Park site annually, that would be 12,085 for 500,000.
You said 500,000, oh, half a million.
Right. And for, if it was moved to the alternate location, this is in a flood zone X, that would be 2,300 annually.
Okay, what's flood zone X mean?
Well, it's not in the 100-year flood zone.
So it's not in the flood plain?
It is not in the flood plain. It is not.
Okay. Sorry, Corey, go ahead.
And that is only for the first 500,000 dollars worth of insurance. Those costs do not include the additional 7.5 million that you'll have to obtain in the commercial market. I actually did ask for, if your insurance agent could compute those costs. He has sent the information off to the underwriters. Unfortunately, it didn't come back for this meeting. It'd be anticipated to come back. But I would expect that you could have a similar differential. You're seeing the cost for the first 500,000, and you can, you know, extrapolate that out to 7.5 million.
Okay.
The, one of the other conditions that's applied to the grant is, is that at the Stanley White Center, is that all construction must occur in the previously disturbed ground, is the exact language that's in the condition. And this generally means that you must confine your construction to the existing footprint of the present building. That means that you can't build a larger facility at the existing site if you wanted to.
So according to the grant conditions, we have to build the building back in the same, basically the same footprint?
You're, at present, you're supposed to build it back at the same footprint, in the same design configuration as it presently is now. However, under the 428 grant program, you can deviate from the, the design of present, okay? Meaning that you can shift and move walls around inside the building, but you can't, you can't change the footprint of the building.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the insurance, regardless of where the building is, they still need to obtain this insurance, or no?
No.
So at the old location, they would have to do the extra 7.5 new location? What, how much is the insurance?
Because the building is outside the special flood hazard area, you can apply for a waiver of the insurance purchase requirement that is presently on the grant, because you are moving it outside of a special flood hazard area. My reading this weekend indicates to me that FEMA is not allowed to require you to carry flood insurance outside of a special flood hazard area. So I believe that the waiver request would be granted, so you would not have to carry flood insurance at, at the other location, or another location outside the special flood hazard area.
And depending on the building, obviously, the city would have insurance on that building, correct? The new building that will be built, obviously, you would take insurance out on that building, correct?
Yes, ma'am. You would, you'd be, and I'm only speaking about the flood portion of it. You obviously will be carrying wind and other peril insurance on both of the, on the buildings, no matter where you locate them. It's just the flood component that, that changes because it is a condition of the grant, and if you move it, then the, that condition should fall off, and you should not have to, to pay flood insurance. But I would also like to remind you that the flood insurance premium that you're having to pay at the old location is, is in perpetuity. It will go on forever, no matter what the insurance rates are. And in speaking with your insurance agent this, this week, he informed me that through the Lloyd's Companies, that the insurance rates this year went up around 30 to 35% for flood insurance. However, he did note that your present flood insurance, for reasons unknown to him, did not go up by 30 or 35%. So, you know, that doesn't mean that it won't go up next year. But the point that I'm trying to get across, across to you is, is that this flood insurance requirement there will be in perpetuity, and it will be an ongoing cost to the city.
Okay, and did, Foster, do we have flood insurance on that building prior to Florence?
Yes, we did.
Do you know the price of what that was we were paying?
No, ma'am, I do not. We can get that information for you there.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Alderman, go ahead.
Corey, I know you said you don't have that number, it's, it's an estimate, but the, the coverage of 12,000 annually for the first 500,000, you said if you extrapolate that out to the 7.5 million, is it, is it really that much? Because, I mean, 500,000, it would be 15 times on top of that, which would put it at 180,000 in flood insurance a year. Is it, is it, could potentially be that much?
My, my best guess would say that it would be slightly less than that, because it's a jumbo package. The, the problem is, is that with, with all of the storms that we have had, with what's happened in Florida, and so on and so forth, the, the commercial insurance market is very selective and very limited. They're, they're doing a great deal of looking at the loss history and the location of the facility. And yes, you are building it up above the flood plain, which is a plus and should result in a reduction. But, but you're also talking about a, the commercial insurance market versus the, the national flood insurance program. Now, the, the national flood insurance program has always historically been less expensive than, than through the commercial market. But to answer your question, I, I would, in my, in my opinion, I would believe that it would come in slightly less than that, but I, but 180,000 would not surprise me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time? I still have one question. Yes, sir.
I actually haven't finished either, but I'll continue.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you want. It's, okay. The, the, the other conditions were on that if, if any environmental issues occur at the site and any historical artifacts are found there, that you're required to cease construction immediately, and to, to take all measures necessary to either remediate or, or monitor what is going on, and to, to notify FEMA. And, and when, when that does occur, that brings in a host of, of other issues in terms of environmental assessments and historical or archaeological issues that are involved. That's, that's just a standard grant condition that's usually put on, on most, on most grants. And then the, those, the, and the last condition that was, that was placed on the grant order is, is that it requires, the grant conditions say that, that you must comply with these certain conditions, and it lists them. And then it goes on to say that this review does not address all federal, state, and local regula, requirements. Acceptance of federal funding requires a recipient to comply with all federal, state, and local laws. Failure to obtain all appropriate federal and state local permits jeopardizes the federal funding. That is a catch-all phrase that FEMA puts on all of their grants, that, that basically says, it's your responsibility to comply with all the rules and regulations. We've only replied, we've only reviewed part of them, and it's up to you to, to comply with all of, all of the regulations. And this is also detailed in, in part 9.17 and 0.18 of the Congressional Federal Register that, that states that applicants are, are required to comply with these, with these laws. This has to do with Executive Order 11988, which is probably the most important one that would particularly apply to this facility. I noticed that Mayor Outlaw mentioned it briefly in the beginning regarding fill at the, at the site over there. And Executive Order 11988 actually requires FEMA to, to, to do a minimum amount of disturbance in the flood plain when federal funds are being utilized. And, and that generally calls for the building of, the buildings on, on piers and pilings without the fill underneath them, so that the water can, can flow through, and that there's a minimal impact on the building. This particular project was submitted to them with, with fill, and, and they, and for reasons unknown, they approved it.
Corey, on Executive Order 11988, are we, are we required to comply with that executive order?
Yes.
And tell me, what does that executive order say about building, where you can build and rebuild, and how, what you would do if you goes alternate sites, or so on and so forth?
Executive Order 11988 is, is a, is a, an order that was originally started off with, with President Jimmy Carter, and it's been modified by subsequent presidents, I think, including Clinton and, and Obama, under, under different versions of it. But, but it basically, it talks about, the, the main purpose of it is, is that when the utilization of federal funds are utilized, the agency that is dispersing the federal funds is required to, to do everything reasonably possible to minimize the, the amount of federal dollars that go into a special flood hazard area. And there's a, there's an eight-step process that they're required to go through as a result of, of that executive order, that where, where numerous questions are, are answered, and the determinations are made. One of, one of the most important ones is, as to whether a, an alternate location exists outside of the special flood hazard area that can be utilized to, to accomplish the same function. And to quote for you from, from Executive Order 11988, in, in a section that I, I got out of the, off of the FEMA website today, step number three of the eight-step process requires FEMA to evaluate alternatives. Okay, and the question is, is there any reasonable alternative to locating the project in a flood plain or wetland? If yes, FEMA must locate the action at the alternate site. The site that you have presently at the Stanley White Center was approved by FEMA, and it is conditional on your compliance with Executive Order 11988. In reviewing how FEMA did their processing of this In reviewing how FEMA did their processing of this to grant the approval there, as I said to you before, they stated that they did a limited amount of review. But in the review process, they, the question is asked, is there a practical alternative site location outside the hundred-year flood plain? And the answer to that in the FEMA system was no. FEMA said that there was no alternative. And then the statement that is in there is relocation is not a practical alternative as the facility provides a critical social and recreational source to the surrounding low-income community and the majority of the available land in the area is also flood plain. That is, that is the statement and generally the basis that FEMA used to make the determination that there was no other alternative location. The problem that I see that it exists now is, is that when FEMA was making this determination, the city was asked this question about an alternate location. And as you all may recall, at the meeting that I was here, it was discussed and it was said that there were no alternate locations for this, for this site other than at this present location. And that information was communicated to FEMA and that is what they made their basis and their decision upon. FEMA doesn't actually come out here to do an evaluation as to whether there's land available here or there's land available there. They rely on, you know, the statements of the applicant that, that there is no alternative site. And then they continue on, there's a lot more that goes into the process, but I think I answered that part of your question. There's a lot more that goes to it, but I'll stop there.
Yeah, but since that application was submitted and the board will remember, we looked at some alternative sites, one of them being where the Daisy Inn property is and the other one was over there where the church property was located. But we had some citizens say they had their concerns about children crossing Broad Street to get to it. So, we submitted the application as no alternative site. Since then, we have an alternative site. And Jeff, you and I were talking about this earlier today. How many feet did you say the alternative site was from the edge of the property to the edge of the new property?
I think from edge to edge, if you go from the closest corners of the two, it's like a hundred and seventy-five feet. But it would all depend on where the actual center would be located. I think, Foster, you said from center to center was right at a thousand feet.
That's correct. From the front door of the existing Stanley White Recreation Center to the center of the new property, it's right at a thousand linear feet.
Oh, well, Harris, you got a question?
Mr. Corey?
Yes, ma'am.
Since the application was submitted stating that there was no alternative location, does that mean you need to inform FEMA of this and then their decision may change or is there another process?
The answer would be that, yes, you, you are required to notify FEMA that there is an alternate location that became available or is available. At the time the application was submitted, it was based upon the information that was presented to them, the city presented it to them. And if that situation has changed, in other words, if there is a reasonable alternative location, okay, then, then that needs to be evaluated.
So, how, okay, so you don't know that process and what that looks like? Can the money be reduced? Can funding change?
The, the funding would not be changed because you have elected to do the four twenty-eight grant program. And whether you elected to do that or not, the funding level would not change. And I won't get into the technicalities of that. However, what I will say is that the funding option that you selected provides the most versatility or flexibility to the city. This is a capped, a capped project and it will, will not go up or down.
Okay, and can you give me that date again, when the application was officially submitted with all the documents necessary to make a decision?
I do not have that date in front of me. I will say that the grant was approved a month ago approximately. So, it usually, I believe it took a four- to six-month process to work its way through the FEMA system. If that's your question, are you asking the date?
Yeah, I want to know the date that everything was submitted. Does anybody have that date?
I would, I would guess it was around December following the storm or maybe even January or February following the storm, when we actually submitted to PW.
What's the date of the architectural stuff that might give us?
Like, everything was provided to be able, for them to make a final decision, so.
It's tough to answer the question and I'll tell you why. We submitted the information from, from the architect, okay, well over a year ago. And, and through that process, that paperwork was sent back to us on a couple of different occasions for a request for modification. And then as it was going through the review process, there were also additional requests from different departments of FEMA as they went through their review. For example, when it got into insurance review, there were questions that were submitted to me that I answered. So, I guess to answer your question technically, the project was submitted, the date that we submitted, the engineer's estimate, which was the city's version of what it would cost to rebuild the Stanley White Center at its present location. And it took probably a year to go through the FEMA review process, so.
So, I remember this year, we needed to supply some more information so you don't, yeah, that you don't have. So, can anyone provide the date of when every last document was submitted in regards to the grant?
I'm trying to look it up right now.
Okay, yeah, because that's very important for me to know.
Okay, anything else right now? I'm going to get you out of the main.
Corey, did you say that this was a capped project, meaning the money can't be lower than what's given, but can it be higher? So, if we submitted a change order to say that we found a site that is outside the flood zone, that would meet all the criteria, would there be an opportunity to get reimbursement from FEMA for that property?
You, you could utilize part of the, of the money that was provided to you for FEMA under the four twenty-eight guidelines, okay, to, to purchase land to relocate it outside the flood zone with FEMA's permission, of course. You have to apply for a change in the scope of the work. The four twenty-eight grant program has very specific rules at once it's approved. It can only be reduced for, for two reasons. The first one being insurance reasons. If your insurance company paid you more money than FEMA had anticipated that they took away from the grant, which is, which is not going to be the case here. And the second one is for fraud or failure to complete the scope of the work.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and then I'll run with Harris and get you.
I just want to, want you to repeat something because I want to make sure I heard it correctly. I wasn't sure. You're saying with this four twenty-eight grant, we would only be able to build the current footprint of Stanley White. So, it's eighteen thousand fifty-seven feet. We couldn't expand it to twenty or twenty-five thousand feet. We would have to go on that same footprint. I want to make sure I understood you correctly. Is that correct?
That, that, yes and no. It's not a provision of the four twenty-eight grant program. It's separate than that. It is a, it is a condition of the grant that was approved. It was, it's, it was approved as a four twenty-eight grant, but the.
Regardless of the technicalities, is that what you're saying?
The footprint doesn't have anything to do with the four twenty-eight part of it. It's a condition of the main grant.
That's saying it has to be the exact same footprint?
At the present time, that's how it's been approved, yes.
I just want to make sure.
All right, well, Harris, go ahead.
To go back to the question in regards to having to ask them prior approval in regards to purchasing or utilizing funds for land, you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if we already purchased land, what do we do in that instance if they already purchased the land?
You, you can apply, you can still apply to FEMA for a modification of the scope and ask to include the cost of purchasing that land within the FEMA.
Is it possible it could be denied?
Yes, it is.
So, if it's denied, we don't get that money back that we spent to purchase the land and we can't use the money out of the eight million that was granted for the land? Or is that a married question?
No, I could answer the question, okay. If it's denied by FEMA, in other words, the scope of the work to, to change the scope of the work to purchase the land, you, you would not be allowed to utilize that money for that. However, do you mind if I expand a little bit more upon what you had to say? Okay, because a lot of this has gone through the thought process of everything that's going on. You have, you have multiple potentials for four twenty-eight grants, okay, besides the Stanley White Center, okay? If there is, if there is money left over at, let's say you were to rebuild at Stanley White, okay, and you, and you had five hundred thousand dollars left over, okay? The leftover money that you have, you get to keep, but you can only use it for certain specific earmarked things. And FEMA for Florence expanded that list and it's quite extensive. You could use it to purchase that land if you wanted to, if you had leftover money, even if, even if they denied the, the utilization of the, of the scope of the work. The, the second part of it is, is that you have the BP building that has not been processed or finalized by FEMA and there are some options available to you in regards to that property if you wanted to utilize it or to go in that direction.
Okay.
So, no, my follow-up was, so the land that was purchased on the tenth, what fund did we take that out of for the property that is the alternate location?
General fund.
General fund?
And I, I actually do want to back up and correct myself, okay? You, you cannot, you could not utilize the FEMA funding for the purchasing of that land, okay? But you did receive five hundred thousand dollars in flood insurance proceeds, okay? And all these funds are now co-mingled together. So, how you utilize the, there are not the federal conditions that are applied to the insurance money. And so therefore, that money has more flexibility to it than, than the FEMA grant money does.
And is that included in the eight million dollars?
The eight million dollars is the total cost. The amount of money coming from FEMA is, is less than five hundred thousand. And then it's at a seventy-five percent cost here, so you basically have three figures. The FEMA funding amount, the state funding amount, and the insurance amount. And that's the one that totals slightly over eight million dollars.
Okay, so you can confirm that we took the four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for that property from general fund and didn't use insurance money?
Finance is married here.
I know she was here earlier. She can just.
And I believe that did come from fund balance to purchase that property, yes.
Okay, let me, and then I'll, and then I'll.
He actually just answered it.
All of my bets.
You're saying that if we don't meet the, you're saying that if we don't meet the requirements for the grant and we have to reapply, with your experience in this, what timeframe are we looking at again for starting another process?
Could you, I'm not sure what process that you're referring to or reapplication, the.
Reapplication, that process.
Are you, are you asking if you wanted to modify the scope of the work to, let's say, to go to another location?
Yes.
Is that your question?
Yes.
That, that process would go in and mostly, and actually most recently, that was, that was discussed with the state as to what the timeframe was for that in anticipation of this meeting. And we were, we were told that the modification of that is a relatively simple process. The, the long, the longer part of it is the, is the EHP or the Environmental Department of FEMA's review of the property to make sure that it's a suitable investment for federal funds, meaning you'd most likely have to do a site survey on it and certify it's not a hazardous waste dump or something to that effect. But to answer your question, probably thirty to sixty days in that general area. It may be a little longer than that.
Okay, I'd like to switch gears just a second. I need to ask an architect question. Could you come on back up this year? I forgot to ask you earlier, I'm sorry, but if the building were built at the present location, and I think you were talking five feet, six feet?
Roughly.
Could you give us, I assume it would be eight-inch rise? Is that right on steps?
Little less than that, but eight inches is a good round number.
So, are you looking like, you're the architect, is that twelve steps or what? How many steps is that?
Pretty close.
And how, how long a ramp would that be?
Well, it would be one foot for every inch, okay? And I didn't bring my calculator, but they get to be quite lengthy.
Seventy feet. So, the building, if designed and put back there and not considering the cost, just the functionality of it, the utility of it, it's almost not high enough to have an elevator unless you have one of those outside elevators. So, what do you, what do you guys do normally in a situation like that? Reason I'm asking is, is one thing very important for the citizens of New Bern is that during Hurricane Florence, I don't know how many, I don't know how many times citizens in New Bern were transported to Ben Quinn Elementary School, Archer Branson School, Archer Trent Park. There was not a facility anywhere nearby. And part of that is in the event, not in the, it's going to happen when the next one happens, is that, there were four locations, as I recall, in Craven County. The other one, I think, is Farm Life up in Vashville. So, one problem in shutting down shelters and a lot of, lot of the residents that were in those shelters were not ready and had not received a new home stand. Part of that was that schools need open back. And so, part of the, of the, what I've heard from citizens in New Bern is could the facility be built and would it meet Red Cross standards for a shelter? Now, obviously, we can make wind load and things like that. But number one, for the ADA compliant end of it, here we are right back again, like we're struggling here for the last fifty years trying to get an elevator in this building and we haven't done it yet. And now we're thinking about building somewhere where the height didn't quite where you need an elevator. But for the elderly residents of New Bern, somebody's going to have to get them up. How many steps?
Roughly twelve.
At our, our ramp.
Or lengthy ramp.
So, and would you, I don't mean to put you on the spot because I do have information and I can, I can answer it, but I wrote an expert answer. Would this be the location, would it be Red Cross approved for shelter?
I would think it'd be disqualified and only base that opinion on work we did for Pamlico Community College and there are very specific requirements for emergency management use. And I use that term loosely. That has a very specific meaning for those in the business. But, you know, essentially, the recreation center, if built back at Henderson Park, will be on top of a hill. And so, if we have another flood event similar to what was experienced, it would be surrounded by water so you wouldn't have what I would think would be the necessary access for the safety of the people and taking care of the people that might be taking refuge in the building.
So, while we're having the next one, when the next one comes, hopefully it won't be as bad as Hurricane Florence. And because we, you're probably not as familiar with the pumping system, the two twenty-one thousand gallon pumps we have on Simmons Street, but I assume during the next hurricane, that that water is going to go back toward, toward Simmons Street from the Craven Terrace area where we took the forty-two units out, which was a lake, by the way, during the last hurricane. So, when that water is cascading back to the pumps, have you considered the compromise it might put the integrity of that backfill as far as from the front and from the back vortex considerations of that water going along the size of that building and then meeting back up? Have you taken that into consideration?
We've not done any calculations, but that's another reason why we suggested the pilings and great beam foundation, which is a much more stable structure.
So, in doing that, would you mediate and would you have the one inch per square foot FEMA required, in my opinion, about two inch, to get that water through that system?
Essentially, I think we're talking about soil hydraulics at that point and saturation and things of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to note out there that another reason why Stanley White flooded so bad is because the pump or the Jack Smith Creek wasn't working. But I know that from the hurricane, we received funds to mitigate this issue over the thirty-three miles of city that we have. So, I'm not gonna claim that there's gonna be another hurricane as bad as that, but we still need to, you know, take that into consideration. In regards to the shelter, is there gonna be a process where the public can make a decision on it? If that's an amenity that they want in regards to the Stanley White building going back to the same location or going to a new location?
Try to lay up to the board.
Um, well, you know, I don't think you can have a shelter in the current location.
Right, I know.
Oh, okay, I was confused by what you just said.
Right, so I'm just saying, where did the shelter idea come from?
It came from me.
It came from you, okay.
I mean, I just, you know, if we were gonna, long before any of this process started, and being in public safety for thirty-eight years, I just saw the need of a community shelter so neighbors could locate, um, out of the danger of a hurricane, and neighbors could take care of neighbors during that time while they're in the shelter.
Right.
You know, um...
So, we also have other locations, um, and it wasn't a shelter to begin with, so I think that needs to be taken into consideration in regards to...
Yeah, and I, I agree, I mean, it's fine with me, um, whether you make a shelter or not, but I just think it's kinda ridiculous that if we're gonna build a new building, that we don't make it suitable for a Red Cross shelter. So, the, the community would have a place to get. There is other shelters, but the problem is there's no generator and there's no air conditioning and there's no way of cooking and anything like that in some of the other shelters. And it, it gets, it gets, the conditions are terrible. After about a week or ten days.
Yeah, they know, so maybe you can mitigate some of these other buildings.
You know, so if we had a, a nice, um, building that, um, had backup generation power and, uh, we, they could rest comfortably and watch some television and, and some air conditioning and stuff like that during the time, I just thought it would be, would be nice.
My other question for the application when it was submitted to FEMA, um, I know we stated that it was important to the community. Now, when we speak of Duffy Field, Broad Street, is that considered Duffy Field?
So, I, I do have a graphic, uh, this is the next map, if you'll look on here, um, and this was submitted, uh, to us by Development Services. What you see in red is the Duffy Field area, and the new site is located in Duffy Field.
So, you would call it the Greater Duffy Field? I know with the Choice Neighborhood, the CNI, those boundaries were defined. And so, is that where you're getting that from the, from the CNI Choice Neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Alderman Best.
Are you finished? Alderman?
Oh, I was just answering her question, I have some more questions for Cory, whenever we get a chance.
Okay, well, I just wanna piggyback on what you were saying. And that was a concern of mine as well, that if we rebuild Stanley White, whether or not at the point of where we even got any clarification from FEMA or engineer, that if we rebuild it, I would love to see a Red Cross shelter in place. Because I know, um, during Hurricane Florence, I had people, I was out helping people and I had people coming at me, asking me, could they help? Could I help them get in a shelter? And I helped two young ladies get in a shelter. And I just, you know, we had a lot of our people bust out of this city and hasn't come back because they can't come back. They don't have a home. And during that time, you know, not to be able to help people and be able to take people out of harm's way and put them into a facility that they feel comfortable in, because so many people called me and contacted me and said they weren't comfortable in shelters, they weren't treated right. And we can have a shelter in place in our community, in the black community, that's gonna support our people, I think it's a plus, but that's, that's up to the people of the community to make those choices. But I just wanted to express that because I think it's a dire need for us to have a shelter in our neighborhood and the black communities to support our people. And that's totally up to how the people feel about, that lives in the Greater Duffy Field, Five Points area.
Well.
Hopefully that we can, hopefully that we can come to some kind of compromise here and see the big picture. And I'm gonna put this on y'all's back. Do you not want to support your people and have someplace for your people to go in the case of another storm like Florence? And not put in a shelter, then next thing you know, they got, be taken out of the shelter and transitioned from four to five shelters? That's all I, I, I'm gonna say about it.
Well, the problem is too, Alderman Best, is that it's, it, it becomes a burden on emergency management as well as our emergency staff. Because at the last minute, after you're, after you're sitting in water, knee deep, and then, you know, originally you don't wanna go, and then all of a sudden you wanna go. I mean, ask the, ask the fire chief how many people they relocated to a shelter after the hurricane. You know, there was hundreds, hundreds, is that correct? Would it be hundreds? There was hundreds of them. So, it becomes a burden of the city as well. So, wherever, whatever we do, we should look at, at building this building to, to the standards of a, of a shelter. Alderman?
Um, Trip, I assume that your, your drawing and your cost estimate was based off of essentially replacing the current building as it is today, just elevate it up to current building codes and standards. Um, so, it, it would not include probably a commercial kitchen, a backup generator, things like that that would be necessary for a shelter?
Correct.
So, do, does anybody know, is there grant funding opportunities available?
I've already made contact with the Department of Emergency Management, and they're, they're going to assist us in locating funds for a generator.
So, we could, we could potentially, if we went down this route of having a, a shelter, you could get amenities that could be used when it's not in the middle of a storm that would benefit the, the facility, is that correct?
Absolutely.
I mean, it would be restricted only using a generator if it's an emergency, correct?
That's correct, absolutely, the generator could be used anytime.
Don't we have these amenities over at the building that, um, or we were supposed to in the grant for this, uh, state-of-the-art kitchen and everything over on, uh, First Street, the Vault Center? But that was part of the, we never found the funding, interesting. So, is there any buildings over there that could be used for a shelter?
The college has a lease on that now, sir.
Wow, we should've probably thought about that before we did that lease, 'cause that could've been used as a shelter too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question for Cory. Cory, um, under Executive Order eleven nine eighty-eight, are, they obligated us, are they obligated to give us a change of scope of work since we have now found an alternate site? I mean, what, what, aren't they under, under, under the executive order, aren't they kind? I mean, the executive order basically says, if you can find a place to move it other than in a floodplain, that's what you have to do.
Step, step three, uh, well, number one, Executive Order eleven nine eighty-eight, okay, applies to you, you have to follow it as well. And, uh, and, and FEMA ha- has to follow it, uh, a- as well. And so, to, uh, to, to answer your question, that as, as part of the eight-step process that they're reviewing it, okay? Um, they are required to determine if it, if there, if there are any reasonable alternative locations to locating the project in a floodplain. And if there is a reasonable alternative to locating the project in the floodplain, then FEMA is, uh, required to, uh, to move the money out. The whole purpose of Executive Order eleven nine eighty-eight is to discourage the use of, of federal dollars in the floodplain. And, uh, and if federal dollars are going to be utilized in the floodplain, to minimize the impact of those federal dollars as absolutely much as possible. Hence, the, the building of buildings on piers so that the water can flow underneath. Um, it, it goes into examples of instead of...
Like the convention center downtown?
Instead of building a retaining wall, uh, to build a, a natural escape. And, and I didn't, and I didn't hear what you said, ma'am, I was...
I said like the convention center downtown, how they rebuilt that one even though it was damaged during the hurricane.
Let me just take a minute to address that because I was curious.
I was locked and loaded for tonight.
I was, I was curious about that myself since that was one of the questions. So, I reached out to, um, the Assistant County Manager, uh, Gene Hodges. And what he said is that the value of the convention center is eight million six hundred and sixteen dollars. The bids, the repairs to put it back the way it was, was two million sixty-three five sixty-three, which represents twenty-five percent of the value of the center, way below the fifty percent threshold. The reason it stayed closed for so long is that they had structural problems from when they built the building and they decided to fix it at that time. So, that is the reason, uh, it's already built to the flood standards, so up at eleven feet is when they built it, they built it that high. I just wanna make sure for a minute.
With the, um, application, so what I wanted to know was if we would've put on there that there was an alternative location, could it be possible that the funding amount would have been different?
Uh, no.
So, we would've just always had eight million dollars?
Yes.
And so, um, Ms. Sabrina Bangle asked that when it goes to the new location, per Executive Order one nine eight eight, or eleven nine eight eight, the same building we have over here, square footage, has to be on that one?
No, at the, at the existing location, yes. You, you're, the, the conditions of the grant are that you do not go outside the footprint of the existing building presently. That's what the grant says.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you build it at an alternate location, for example, the one that you're talking about, you are not constrained into square footage, you can build whatever you would like.
Gotcha.
As large as you would like.
So, we could, well, possibly, so we, so basically, are you saying that based on all these executive orders, we can't put it back over there? Even if we did everything we were supposed to, based on that executive order, we can't put it back over there at that location?
You, you, you have an approved grant at that location and with conditions. And I've re, I've, I've given you the conditions that apply to the grant, um, a- a- as well as the catch-all condition that says that you must, um, uh, apply, uh, you, you must, uh, enforce, uh, all the executive orders and all the floodplain regulations and, and so on and so forth. But the grant as it presently stands now has been approved for that location based upon the information that was submitted. So, I believe the answer to your question would be yes.
Yes, it can be built?
Yes, it, yes, it can be, I, I think you asked it in reverse, so I may have, I may have answered it wrong, but...
What other questions does the board have at this time?
I would like to know if we would be able to, um, open it up for anyone to have a follow-up question to the information that was presented, and that would be a motion.
The motion is down, just wait a second.
Well, Mayor Board of Alderman, I would like to know, we all know the seriousness of this matter here tonight, that I think we should need, allow the public to, to have at least one spokesperson, only one person to come up and ask if there's any questions that they didn't completely understand that we need to find out to them, if it's just to be one spokesperson? I think we owe the public that much.
Okay, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
And Alderman Best, what means would you qualify who that person would be?
Can we take a break in, um, recess and find out who was gonna be in with questions?
Uh, no, 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 this is not public comment right now. We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
Can we answer? I, 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 my question is unanswered.
Your question needs an answer?
Well, I was saying, how, what was the process, how are we gonna decide or are we just gonna, who, how are we gonna decide that if we say this?
I think it was just acknowledged to us that Mr. James Woods is...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear him say he would be the person.
Ma'am, please, do you call a roll as to this, this motion?
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Mayor Alon?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Adam?
No.
And motion fails? What other questions does the board have at this time?
Oh, I have another question, um, for Cory. I think you're here, I think you're here.
Cory.
Cory. If Stanley White is rebuilt back where it's currently located, elevated the twelve feet, it's eleven feet, okay? And it's, another hurricane comes through, of course, the areas be flooded. We do not have a shelter in place in that current building, 'cause we can't build it, uh, sho- put a shelter in that building, then that eliminates all few, any funding that we would be able to receive from FEMA, correct?
The, um, the answer... The answer technically is, is yes. And, and the reason for that is, is that FEMA provided you the money for the, uh, for the grant, okay? And there's an eight million dollar insurance purchase requirement on that. So, the, the assumption is that you will receive eight million dollars, uh, in insurance proceeds because that was the condition of the grant. If you have damages in excess of eight million dollars, then those potentially could be FEMA-eligible dollars as long as you met the conditions of the grant.
Okay, and that's future funded, that's what I'm saying, future...
Right, however, since the, uh, the, the cost of the building is eight million dollars at a full replacement cost, um, I, I find it hard to understand how you would get future money, uh, over and above the cost to replace the building, but it, it, the potential exists.
Thank you. One more time so I can really understand, you gave us all of the conditions that we needed to complete to build it back in the same location, but in that, go ahead.
There are, there are many, many conditions, I hit the highlights of the conditions that, that I know of and that I have been able to read
Right.
a- as, as part of the, as part of the grant, so...
To be all of those conditions, you still say in your statement that based on the executive order that was previous and Obama updated, um, that we would not be able to build it back in that location because that we have to follow all executive orders. So, the answer would be no, we cannot build it back in that same location.
I, I need to be very careful about how I answer this question, that's why I've been trying to, uh, to, to answer it uh, the same way each and every time, okay? If there is a reasonable alternative to locating the project in the floodplain, okay, according to step three of, uh, of Executive Order eleven nine eighty-eight, okay? Um, you and FEMA are required to, um, uh, to not put federal funds back into the floodplain and put it in an alternative site.
Okay.
Uh, Cory, how long have you been doing this type work?
Thirty-two?
Thirty-some years. Do you, do you think that the alternative site would be applicable to this situation?
It, um, it, it's not my, uh, it's not my jo- I'm not from the community, it's not my job to do that.
I'm not asking you for...
However, it is, it is close to the community, appears to be into the community. Um, do, do I believe that, uh...
I'm asking objectively...
Moving buildings outside the special flood hazard area is a good thing? Having, having done this for thirty-two years and seen nothing but flooded buildings, my answer would be, i- if you can move it outside the special flood hazard area and it still serves the same purpose, uh, then, uh, then that would be my answer.
I, I wasn't trying to get a subjective answer, I was trying to get an objective answer. Part of that is the alternative location within, her, depending on who gets the rural out checks at a hundred and fifty feet if you, if you touch contiguous boundaries. Do you, do you feel objectively from your thirty-some years that, that FEMA would approve of this alternative site?
I believe it would be...
Thank you, that's what I wanted to...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, um, Foster, have you had the opportunity to look at what we would do with the existing Henderson Park if we were to relocate to the alternate site? How would we use that and explain that it's always has to be a park, is that correct?
That's correct, before we get to that, uh, we got an answer for you, Alderwoman Harris. The, um, projects were initially started where we started submitting paperwork to FEMA in April twenty nineteen. In January of this year, we sent in our final submission because we were going back and forth with the questions they were asking us. On March fourteenth of this year, the project was accepted by FEMA and the funds were obligated on May twelfth of this year. Now, um...
I got a follow-up on that, Foster. So, on March fourteenth, when the application was submitted, did you know?
It was accepted on March fourteenth.
When it was accepted? Okay, so at that time on the fourteenth, we kind of possibly knew that there was gonna be an alternative location. Why didn't we update the application?
Hmm, what, what was the date again?
March fourteen.
So, March fourteenth was when it was submitted, but we... So, March fourteenth was when it was submitted, but we knew prior to the fourteenth that there may be a alternative location. How come we didn't submit a corrected application?
I think, I think Corey can answer that question as well, but the, the process was in, in obligation. So, the funds were in the process of being obligated, uh, knowing that we could, if we purchased an alternate site, a simple change of scope of, of work would be all that would it would take.
But that's not what he said, though. He said the application was approved based on no alternative location.
Well, that's what I just said. We would have, we have to, we have to do a, uh, sc, a change of scope of work.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not talking about afterwards, I'm talking about before. I'm trying to explain the transparency on the fact that even when we voted, there was never in all, you know, it was never to be put back in the same location, as we can display tonight, all of the hard work that you guys have done. Um, I, I, I'm, what I'm saying is, is I feel like FEMA should know, like, why we did not submit a truthful application, because we knew prior to the fourteenth of final submission that there was an alternat, alternative location.
Because the application was in, and it was in, the, uh, it was through the, um, what's the budgeting office, OBM?
Office of, I believe, I believe you said March of twenty nineteen, did you not, Foster?
Yeah.
You said March of this year.
It was, it was March of, March of, March fourteenth of this year that it was accepted, it was finally accepted.
When it was finally accepted.
It, it was, by that, by that, that means that FEMA finally accepted the grant. It, it went through the review process, okay, for a year before that.
But shouldn't you alert them if you have something going on, or we just submit it and then we let them know after we done did what we did?
That's what the scope of work is. Exactly.
Well, also, as, as the city manager would say, if he was here not on vacation, he would say, as we've talked about other sites around the city before, it's about site control. We didn't have the property. We didn't have the property in our possession. It would be like going out and saying, "We would like to do this, but this is owned by other people," so we would have to go through the process of actually owning it, which we just closed last week on the parcels, so...
Does that mean that we would, um, pressure the people that were purchasing it, that, um, we would condemn it if they didn't sell it to the city as well?
Let me, let me, uh, qualify the purpose of this meeting again. It is to discuss, discussion regarding the Stanley White Recreation Center. I, i- any legal information you would like, we're not privy to that, to answer these legal questions.
I just want to make sure we're getting all the facts out, because this is an informative meeting.
This is to discuss the Stanley White's location and an alternative location. It's not to, to, for discovery tonight. I, I, and I think the answer to the question too, is why would we have submitted, um, to FEMA the possible purchase of the property when we haven't purchased the property? You know, we can't, we can't ask for a scope of change on a piece of property that we don't own, so...
But that further explains that you never had the idea of putting it back in that same location, because you purchased the property. And on Tuesday that night, it was stated that it was a possible location, and it could have been said that you were closing on the tenth, literally the next day. So, that's where the lack of transparency is and why there's tension between the community and the board, because we may have an outline that says that it's community, but to them, that's not the community. So, to them, still, there isn't a suitable location outside of Stanley White, because that is their community.
Why were these questions not brought up?
They were brought up, but they were stuck on deaf ears.
But I was in a meeting on April the thirteenth with yourself, Alderman Best and Mr. George, and the piece of property was presented. He spoke about it, he talked about it. Mr. Wallace came into the call at the end of it. They were in agreement that it should be viewed and seen and spoken to for more people. Subsequently, on April twenty-second, you, Alderman Harris, the mayor, and, oh, excuse me, uh, Alderman Harris and Alderman Best and the mayor sat in a meeting with Mr. George. I believe Ms. Sampson was on there, uh, Ms. Massey was on there, Ms. Bosky was on there, probably ten people. The piece of property was shown, the maps were shown, the distance was shown, the information. Subsequently, there was, uh, further questions that were answered. All of this, and then we voted on it, but I've never, this, before Tuesday night, I never heard any other issues.
There was tons of questions that people asked. The emails had been sent and, and... Right, on that same meeting, everyone said this would be a great idea for a Plan B, and they wanted it to go to all of the community. You may have five community leaders that are on that, but that doesn't represent the whole community and what they feel that they want for Stanley White. So, that's the reason why Mr. George asked for us to be able to present what was going on, but we told them that we had to keep it on the low, because we knew that we were purchasing the alternative property and didn't want to alert the people of what was going on. So, that's why we're here.
Why, why didn't this come up when, during the closed session, when we were talking about buying this piece of property?
Because I was in, um, DC trying to get resources for my community.
No, you actually made the motion to buy the property.
No, I did, I have to, because it's my ward, and I'm always gonna make a motion for my ward, because like I said, Plan B. So, I mean, I'm not gonna allow anyone to make a motion at my ward.
Ma, Mayor, there's obviously not been a decision made on where this is gonna go. Our architect said he's done no work on this new site. Um, what, what worried me at our last meeting was the thought that this has already been a done deal. It's already been decided where it's gonna go. We have a RFP out for a consultant, Mr. Foster, correct, to engage the public to find out what they would like to see in this new facility. I, I'll just give you my stance, and this is all I'm gonna say. We, we made it clear Tuesday night through a motion that was approved by this board unanimously of the eight million dollars, eight million, six thousand dollars. That has been allocated, it's gonna be used for this Stanley White rebuilding process. At this point, in my opinion, you have option A and option B. You've got option A, to put it back where it is, in the exact same location, assuming that, if our grant would allow us to do so, which is what our consultant said, with the same amenities, the same footprint, the same square footage, the same everything that you have right now. It's gonna have twelve steps to get up to it and a seventy-foot ramp for anybody that's in a handicap chair, correct? Or you have an alternative site that's outside the flood zone, that you won't have to pay potentially over a hundred thousand dollars a year in flood insurance for, that you can have more amenities to, maybe two gymnasiums, maybe four locker rooms, whatever that may work out to be, because you've got the additional funding that would go into building versus the dirt. At this point, I believe that it's up to the consultant that we've got a RFP out for and the Stanley White Recreation Advisory Committee to meet, get the feel from the public, and then come back and report to the board, and then we make the decision.
Hmm, I...
I, I have, I have got a couple more questions, but if you want to finish that...
Well, go ahead. Go ahead.
I, I have a question as far as Henderson Park is concerned. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Hughes, Henderson Park, you gave a sketch of Henderson Park to the group. I didn't see it on this...
We'll have to get Colleen to put that up on me.
Um, and I'm, my concern is the preservation of Henderson Park. I think it's important, it's an important amenity, but it's an amenity that has been lacking. I know, I think I saw Mr. Brown here. I've met with him on a couple occasions about the, the poor conditions of the fields there and how they flood and whatever. What would be the process, you know, in, if we, if we moved the site of the gymnasium or the recreation center? What would be the process for Henderson Park? Because it would be just as important to me to have the fields and everything that we need them to be. Is that going to be part of this process? Will the funds be used to do what I saw in the picture, which was, you know, uh, I see the baseball field and maybe an amphitheater. I've spoken to somebody about football and that, how important football is to the community, yet there's no football field. Could that all be included in Henderson Park?
We believe it can be. So, I wanna, I wanna say a few things about Henderson Park. The city will never sell that. We, we received, uh, a land-water conservation fund grant many years ago to, to do some, uh, improvements to that property. And when we did that, that obligated that land in perpetuity, which means forever, to be outdoor recreation. So, we can't sell a sliver off, we can't, we can't, we can't put a road through it. We've already checked on that. Can't do anything but be outdoor recreation. And so, we do have opportunities to enhance that property, and when we have our consultants come in, uh, part of the public input process will be to, uh, get the public's input on what they would like to see, uh, at Henderson Park. Now, this is something that staff did, uh, just, just to clean up some things on, on what we currently have, but, uh, it's unlimited of what we could do at Henderson Park. There are some limitations. Uh, as everyone knows, that, that is a very wet, uh, wet, uh, park. Uh, both of the fields have, have issues, and, and of course, we're gonna have to elevate some of those things to get, uh, good drainage where you can play sports all the time. But, uh, those are things that can be done. It won't be cheap when you're adding dirt to a field, but it can be done. Yes, ma'am?
Did you say that, um, that based on this, there's a street that cannot be put through here?
We cannot.
When did you find that out?
We could not put a street. A, a, after the conversation came through, yes, we re, re-reached out to, um, our LWCF consultant, uh, and it would not have been approved.
Oh, okay.
We would have had to have submitted that to them. If, if this board wanted to do that, we would have had to submit that to, uh, the National Park Service and, and, and it would not have met their criteria.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? If not, members of the board, I'd like for this board to give the acting city manager directions to prepare the necessary bid documents to demolish the existing Stanley White Center and to prepare the necessary documentation for a change of scope of work to relocate the Stanley White Center out of a floodplain and into an area that was not, that is not in the floodz, zone, on the location bordering, on Third Avenue bordering Third, Broad, and Gaston. We can't make a motion tonight because, um, but we can give direction, so...
Um, I would rather have that in a motion, because how...
Can't do a motion tonight.
So, why are we gonna give direction? What, what, can we do a motion at another meeting? I want solid votes.
We'll come back, we'll come back and do the, uh, the motion at another meeting. But this is...
I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that. How you, how you, how are you gonna sit up and, 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 and do that?
We do it all the time. We give the board, we give the city manager direction all the time.
Can I just, I wanna clarify something. Regardless, regardless of the fact, we have to start the demo process of Stanley White, regardless where it goes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that is what I'd say. My next question is, is the Stanley White Advisory Committee that we voted on, is that a still intact committee and that will meet and work?
Yes, our first meeting is June thirtieth at six p.m.
Okay, I just want to make sure of those two things.
And they're going to discuss what type of amenities they would like to see in the building.
Um, so, so we're, so basically, we're saying that Stanley White can't be built back in the same location?
No. We're saying Stanley White can be built back in the same location, but it'll cost, cost quite a bit more.
So, you don't wanna pay more to, to build it back?
We could get twice the building if we move it a hundred and thirty feet.
So, can I make a suggestion that possibly, I know I see Kurt here, um, maybe we could have a, another meeting for the community to come, and we get together information on what it would be for Plan A and Plan B, and, and allow the community to, to make the decision, and then bring that back to us, and then however we have to say, and we see the information, everyone will have everything that they, you know, that the, that the community gave their thought and they voted. And, you know, we would want the whole board to be there, you know, the FEMA, and have a presentation of what it would look like, and what it would look like in the two different, and they can do a silent vote. And I just wanna know for myself, because I'm the alderman in that ward and I represent that ward, what the community, after they see all of the facts, all of the pictures, what they would ultimately decide, and then bring that back, and based on their decision, I'll be comfortable with voting however they want me to vote, because they are the community, and that's the community that represents, doesn't feel...
Well, well, everything, everything we do has to come back to this board. We have to sign contracts. We have to sign a contract to the contractor that is going to demolish the building.
We understand that.
We have to sign a contract to the contractor that's gonna build the new building. Uh, we have to sign a contract to the contractor that's gonna prepare the site if we move it to the new location. So, this is just giving our city manager some direction.
I'm saying before that direction, can the community still have that conversation? Why are we in a rush? We've been waiting two years for some information. I think the community could wait a little bit longer to get definitive understanding of the, excuse me, sir, hold on one second, of what Stanley White could be at its same location and what it could be at the new location. We have wonderful staff that could probably put something together for them. I feel that the community has come here, they have marched, they have used their voice. And regardless of how we feel, we would not sit in these seats if it wasn't for them. We at least need to do the due diligence to allow them. Since Kurt is here, if he didn't have a problem, to have a meeting that holds sixteen hundred people, COVID, we can ro, rotate out. We've been doing different functions in the city, even though COVID is still running rampant. Why can't we at least do that for them, so that they can have a nice deep breath of understanding and also visuals that work for them? Why can't we do...
Alderwoman Harris, I, I do wanna say one thing. The RFP process that we're going through, part of that includes doing renderings of, of the facility, and I would really, I would really hate for us to come up with something that, that may not be realistic. I prefer whoever we choose, uh, for the architectural firm to be able to come up with something that's gonna be realistic, and that, that's my only comment on that. Hate to, we'd hate, hate for our, hate for our staff to just come up with a shadow of building, and, and you really don't know without going through the, the public input process for that, and, and actually, you could see a footprint of what the building would be, see a side elevation, uh, on what actually could be there.
So, will we do that, um, so when we meet on June thirtieth, are we gonna be looking over the people that submitted for this?
The committee will be involved in the interviews. We're gonna, we're gonna select, uh, we had, we ended up having sixteen firms to, to apply, so we're gonna cull that down, and we're going to invite, uh, three or four in for an interview.
Okay.
And the committee will be involved with that.
Okay, um, and so during that process with them, does the building have to be torn down, or when does the building have to be torn down before we make a decision? Because it's a historic building, like, just to jump on tearing it down, I think that's kinda a little...
The building, the building has to be torn down.
We understand it has to be torn down, but you know it's a controversial issue and it's very sentimental, like, if it's a process, you know, how soon does it have to be torn down? Is there an expiration date?
Well, I, I don't...
I'm asking Foster.
That, that's really up to the board on when you would like to see that come down.
Okay, so it's based on us deciding when we have to tear the building down?
Yes.
Well, Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris?
Yes.
I would rather for us to go ahead on and get the building torn down, so that we can proceed on and build Stanley White back there. That'll be done, we can go ahead on and start the process of rebuilding it back there.
Amen.
Yep.
So, they won't prolong this any, any longer, getting that building rebuilt?
Alderman Odom?
Uh, a couple things. Uh, believe it or not, I actually see both sides. Um, I, I've said from day one that if the building can't be built back there, is there a way to utilize a slab that's there for the basketball court, for example? So, my concern, if you go ahead and demolish it now, does that mean we're gonna tear out the concrete foundation for the basketball court that we may end up wanting to utilize and repurpose as an outdoor basketball court? So, to me, there, there's, there's just a few more questions that I would like to see some answers to. I agree with Alderwoman Harris, we, we have been going down this road a long time. This is why I think some of us have had some conversations throughout the past two years about when the day comes and we've got the money, how soon are we at the point to start seeing something happen? And we're at that point, and I'm afraid we're where I thought we were gonna be in typical government. We've, we've done a lot of work, um, but there could have been more work done. And look, the monkey wrench you got thrown into it is the property up there that is outside the flood zone, that is within a hundred feet, a hundred and seventy-five feet from corner to corner of the par, property. So, what I said earlier, correct me if I'm wrong, was believe exactly what you just recommended. Option one, option two, like we did with the Martin Marietta, where we had the, the little circles, everybody went around and put their stickers on the amenities they would like to see, and then you figure out what you wanna do. I don't see any harm or foul in that, and if there's something, if there's some historical artifacts, if there's something at the current Stanley White Center that could be used to be repurposed in the new center, then I would be all for that as well. But my, my concern with moving forward, and I, I appreciate my fellow board members forward, and I, I appreciate my fellow board members, that the expedition that we want to move on with, with getting something done is, what I wouldn't want to do is go demo the building, tear it down, and then figure out, oh, we want a basketball court there, and then we're paying money to put a basketball court back there when we could utilize what's already there. That, that's my concern with that.
I can agree with that.
Well, that can certainly be handled in the, the request, bids, out for proposal.
It can be, yes.
To evaluate these, the, uh, to evaluate the concrete for later use.
But, but I, with all that being said, I do think that it, we know that the building's going to have to be torn down eventually. There's no harm or foul in putting the RFP out now. So, when the day comes and it's time to do that, we're not starting again with putting the RFP out. So, there's no harm or foul, in my opinion. I would support putting the RFP out to see what we get back.
How about the scope of, change of scope of work?
I meant if, what Corey said, that we're obligated to tell them that there's a parcel of land that's outside of the flood zone, we're obligated to tell them that anyway, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, it's not really, is it, is it really a decision for us or we have to tell them that there's a parcel located in close proximities outside of the flood zone? As our consultant, would you be obligated to do that regardless?
You, you certainly should.
Okay. So, I guess that answers the
Part, part, part of staying out of trouble is strictly playing by the rules. Okay? And I've told you what the rules are. And so, if there is a, a viable location outside the old, then you should notify.
Mr. Corey, when you, um, do that, we, are you able to CC us on the board so we know that it was submitted?
Uh, yes. Uh, well, um, I, we usually have three people, the three contact people within the city that we CC. Um,
I'm asking to be added so I know that it's done.
We could, um,
We can ask Mark to, Mark's the signature person. We can ask Mark to.
Mark to CC?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I answered you. I have no objection to CCing everybody, uh, um, and, uh, so.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Appreciate it.
But, Mr. Mayor, I'm out. I did have one more comment. Um, I asked Mark, and he was able to get IT to create a email address. It's stanleywhite@newbornnc.gov. Um, I personally, and I can tell you with the utmost certainty, because I went back and checked, have not received one single email or one telephone call from anybody with their intents and purpose. I understand that we've had several meetings. I've heard the community. Um, you know, one of the reasons I can tell you why I voted to put it back where it was is because Mr. Bernard George stood here and said, "There's going to be nowhere within the Duffy Field Community that you're going to find this landmass to where you can have a recreation center and the, and the fields." He was right. It just so happens that there happens to be some land that became available that's congruent to that. So, you know, I, I asked him to create that. If anybody sends an email to stanleywhite@newbornnc.gov, it automatically goes to every member of this board. So, we all know your feedback and your comments. So, please, spread that throughout your community so we can get back all that feedback. What I would like to see if the board is not opposed to it is all of those responses compiled when the, um, consultant meets with the group, and in that way, that can kind of be a starter for the conversation.
Okay. So, back to my recommendation for direction, which is to, for the acting city manager to prepare the necessary bid documents for demolition, understanding that we might take into consideration using the concrete pad for basketball or whatever else. Uh, and also ask the consultant to prepare a change of scope of work for the alternate site. All this stuff will be in the works and for whatever we do, we, we still need to do a, a change of scope, uh, scope of work. And I know we're not going to do a motion, but I would like for the clerk to call the roll and, uh, a yes or no for these directions. Are we okay with that?
Do you want to wait for Alderman Kenzie or do you want to go?
Yes.
Well, I, Bobby, I'm just, just so I'm, I'm clear. Um, I realize the demolition has to take place, but does that mean that it'll come back to us in the form of a resolution that weekend? So, all you're saying is prepare the bid package. We're not moving forward with doing this.
No, we, we want to prepare the bid package and go ahead and get vendors on board.
Okay.
And then they would have to come back here for approval. Matt, you would probably be the one doing that, correct?
Foster, I would guess you're right. We would, we would get our team and get the bid.
So, we're basically just putting the process in place.
Just getting the process in place.
Want to make, make sure.
But the board has to approve the contract, yes.
If you're going to ask for a roll call, can we separate it? Because I'm going to say no to the demolition right now, and I'm okay with being honest with FEMA. So, I want to vote yes and no.
I don't know.
I mean, it's just direction. She could, because I, and the only reason I would tell you yes on the demo because you're just going to prepare documents. You're just getting that already. We're not moving forward because I agree that we need to have more information about what will stay, what will leave, and it'll be better. So, I say yes to getting the documents prepared and all the vendors prepared. I just want to make sure we're not moving forward with it.
And that's what we're asking for, is to prepare the documents.
And yes to FEMA as well. Did you get that? Did you record me?
I've got you recorded. I don't have you all typed out, though.
Okay.
So, I have everybody heard. Do you want me to wait for him so that you have everyone's input or?
I would just go ahead and go.
I think you should wait for him, for Alderman Kenzie.
Can you step, man? Alderman Kenzie, I'm going to repeat the, um, it's not a motion. It's just direction that we are asking the acting city manager to, or give him direction to start preparing the necessary bid documents to demolish the existing Stanley White Center. And we're going to ask the, uh, acting city manager to work with our consultant to go ahead and prepare a change in the scope of work for relocating to the new alternate site. It's everything that we do will have to come back. If, once we get a bid for the demolition, it will have to come back to the board for approval. And the scope of work, the consultant will copy or have us all copy to know about the scope of work for the change. So, we're just giving direction tonight. Okay? Okay?
All right. Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Astor?
That's fine.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other business?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. No other business. We're adjourned. Thank you.